...2015, please rise to the floor. For the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all. Emergency efforts to my right, the town clerk, possibly the attorney general. Councilman Legano?
Here.
Councilman Hinselberger? Here. Councilman Doyle?
Here.
Councilman Prodigus Axit? And Superintendent Porter?
Here.
And we're going to be building inspector interviews. So we'll be down in the stairs. Oh, it's like they should have booed you.
Did I change that?
Thank you for coming again.
Has anything changed since you were in L.A.?
The answer's all over.
Oh, yeah. I'm real.
When exactly are you available during the day?
Oh, I can be available in the afternoons where I can change my schedule in Stanford two days a week if I had to.
To be here in the morning?
Mm-hmm.
Well, this position is pretty much as new.
Okay.
Just to cover the building inspection. You know, fire calls and so on.
Yeah, well, they're all...
Okay, I believe you have your certification.
Yes.
Okay, so you have any other questions? And you work well with the trainees?
Yes.
You already know.
Yeah, I work very well with the trainees.
Yeah.
Everything's good with her.
You don't mind putting in the extra hours for, I mean, you don't have any other outside jobs other than Stanford, though?
Right.
So you are available to us?
I mean, my agreement with Stanford is 20 hours a week. They don't really, if I decide to change it, then they don't have a issue with that. So in other words, if you said, "Could you come in tomorrow and work?" however.
For a few hours in the morning, you'd be able to do that.
I mean, it might be dependent on notice to do that, but, you know, it's, we're pretty busy, so with, you know, with inspections, but the training can take care of it.
Is Joe, like, supposed to be in the kitchen? He's on vacation now. So you jump into action for him?
Sure.
No, he's got, well, actually, he has gone and some of the flying planes, um, who's going for the fire calls.
Okay.
We have an hourly rate, um, that you... It's 25 hours a month. Is that exactly what you're asking?
Yeah, it's fine. Probably a little low for a great start.
Do you have any questions for us?
Not really. Okay, thank you very much.
Can you, um, put the good down?
Thanks. Shout good night.
Just like a little throw-in. I think the door was open here. Thank you very much for the site.
All right. It's a good thing. Can we shut this or do you care at all?
Yes, please.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Do you want me to sit here or sit in the end there?
I'd sit right here.
Okay, I like to sit. It's like a White House, uh, sitting here is something I feel.
So you'd like to be our deputy building inspector?
I would trust it. Sure.
Are you available during the day or...?
That depends. Depends on, um, how many hours you're looking at during the day.
Would be like mornings?
A particular day? A time?
I'd, well, I'd say like eight to 12. We have the building inspector secretary, she comes in at 12:30. Sometimes the contractors come in the morning, you'd be covering for, you know, the building inspector.
Okay. Well, currently I work for the state, so I work from Los Angeles Monday through Friday.
And you have set hours?
Yes. It's usually 7:45 a.m. before, yeah. But that's subject to change. I mean, there's days that, you know, when I'm needed to be here, I can take, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty flexible as far as, um, time. You know, I could work the Saturday or I could work later that day or whatever.
And while you're, um, working there, do you do any of the fire calls?
For the fire company?
Yeah.
I can leave, yes. If I'm there. Now, um, you, I, I can spill everything onto you guys if you want, you know, or you can just continue to ask me questions. I mean, it's really up to you guys. I mean, I can tell you really what my job is currently. You all, probably all know Jason Dean that works here for the town as a constable. I worked with Jason, he's one of my officers that I've started for, uh, used to be at the PESO Developmental Center now as OPWDD. Basically, my job is, we have nine counties that we have to do fire safety inspections on. So we have 600 sites. It's from Westchester to basic all. I do, right now myself, I do the family there, which is basically a private home where somebody would come and live, we have one in Los Angeles. So it's, my, my schedule is flexible, I make my own appointments to go to the sites. So, I mean, I know if you're looking to have somebody here on Tuesdays or is it every day? I mean, that's kind of, um, the question I have. You know, the dot, the job description is kind of...
It's actually, yeah, it's actually a backup position.
Right.
You know, because we do, we do have a, you know, a person in a position, like we're saying, you know, I'm on vacation. So, you know, if you use a way of doing training or whatever, just so we would have a backup person, you know?
Right.
You know, to go to the fire calls or, you know, do whatever.
I'm not 100% sure if I can be dedicated to be here for like two weeks at a time. I could definitely be available via cellphone, um, you know, to respond to a fire call. I'm not sure if anybody knows, but I'm deputy fire chief in Los Angeles, so I would be covering probably half the district anyway, so I mean...
We're the one.
I, you know, and I've been on the other side of where I called for the building inspector and that person wasn't available. And, you know, can't wait till tomorrow, well...
And you know if it's happening now, right?
I mean, me personally, there's things that I, because of my training and stuff, I can say, "Yes, I'm comfortable, we'll come tomorrow." That's fine. Because, you know, I'm certified as a code enforcement officer already, so, um...
Now, it said your, um, basic code enforcement training certificate was from 2007. Have you taken that course since then?
Yeah, you have to. You have to go every, every year, you have to maintain, um, you have to have 24 hours every year to keep up your certification.
And you've done that?
Yes, you have to, sure. You can go on the Department of State website and my name will appear under there as a code enforcement officer. In fact, I put it on the paperwork that I actually go into, um, the State Fire Academy in October for the week to, uh, do the 24. I was supposed to go, I'm out of work actually now, I tore my knee for the second time playing softball. So I'm supposed to go back to work. So I was supposed to actually be there last week, I was supposed to go to certification and training, but I haven't changed it.
So you kept it up, that's cool?
Well, you have to. I mean, as part of my job with the state, I have to, or if, you know, if I lose your certification, then therefore I can't go out.
So you have a new letter, you're conducting existing building inspections or that class that you make again?
Um, well, as you know, the state really isn't building any new buildings anymore. They've kind of, as far as our agency, there was big plans with the developmental center a few years ago, they're going to build a new complex, and we would have oversight over that, but it didn't happen because of the budget, um, budget process there. So pretty much anything that we're doing now is existing buildings. We're not really doing anything with new construction. Although, part of our training that we have to keep up is new construction. So, you know, we've, or I should say, um, have had to take all the codes, you know, new construction, building permits and all that stuff that those local people proportions.
So if, you know, if we need to do the next few days, you would be available, because you're not working from...
Yeah, that would be a touchy situation, actually. Because if I can't go to work in the state, I certainly can't come to work here. I wanted to go back, but being I tore it for the second time in a year, um, they wanted to keep it out for a little bit, so I go back in the 24th of September. I wasn't aware, I just saw my get today, when I dropped off myself, I wasn't aware that it was actually going online. And that was one of my questions I had. I have some questions if you don't mind.
Oh, yeah. Oh, sure.
That was one of them was, you know, what are you looking for? You've kind of answered it for me. You know, my, he's away, we're looking for somebody that should be here at the town, at the town hall. So, you know, my current status now, I can't guarantee that I can actually be physically in the building. You know, if it was a couple of days a week, certainly I could probably work around it, but to be here five days a week would mean I'd have to take off time from, from work. You know, meet that criteria.
Yeah, but wouldn't, you know, wouldn't be five days, five days anyway? You know, it's just, you know, some hours in the morning, you know, the other building fire calls.
Fire call's not a problem. I mean, you know, I can, it depends on where I am. I mean, like, sometimes it, I can't respond to a call from Los Angeles. Well, I head that way, but I might be...
I don't think you have to be at the fire call, right?
Right, right, exactly.
What happens anyway, you just get, just when you're called and said, you know, "I need to build this stuff."
Right. Which, I mean, the first I go is, I do the five counties for our region. Region four, OPWDD, and it's region four, they consolidate this with Letchworth Village, which is Westchester, Lockland, The Orange, and so on. Right now, I, I'm pretty much confined to Columbia County, Daptures, Oster. So I live in probably 45, 50 minutes away from, at the, at the, you know, first point of response. And I usually don't do more than one or two inspections a day, so I'm usually back in the office, back at Los Angeles by one or two in the afternoon.
Do you have any other questions?
I certainly do. There's one thing that you know about me, if you ever, if you don't know, is I always try to prepare myself to be, um, to perform best in what I can do. And I always have questions, and then drives people crazy, firearms, I have that stuff.
You brought it and asked yesterday.
So you've already, you've already answered that one question. Outside of, um, outside of then when Mike is, like, not here for, you know, for vacation or training, um, there's probably, I'm going to say there might be a good chance that we may be, and it's had to happen, where we've been at the same train. Because he has to maintain his certification as well. I'm not sure where he's going this year, I know he does some of his training locally in the evenings and so on.
Well, I think we're mostly working at, you know, vacation, current vacation time.
And or if he's out of town at night or something, and you can't reach him, then that's kind of what I was looking. I was led to believe, hopefully it would be not a lot of hours, you know?
No, it's, it's just as new.
Right, okay.
Just so we have a backup person.
It's always good to have a backup person. But I mean, in fairness to the past couple of building inspectors that I've had dealing personally, I, I didn't have any issues. You know, I haven't talked to them on the phone, they couldn't make it, but they called me, you know, and, and I don't know if they can use it, so, um, that hasn't been a problem. And I'll, I covered the training, which I documented in my, I covered it in my, in the government. That's really about it. There was an issue, but I'll, I'll leave it alone.
What was the issue?
Well... I'm, I'm a very honest person, and social media, everybody probably is on social media. I read today about the article 78 lawsuit with the town for this, from the government. And I've put it out there, Tony, Tony's?
Do you remember?
No, I'm not. However, Tony O'Beir is my brother-in-law. So I just want to make everybody aware of that. But if, if you know me, I'm a straight shooter, I'm not anybody that's going to be swayed by... No, but I just want to put that out there, down the road, somebody said, "Hey, um, you know, this is, you know, is it a conflict or is it not a conflict?" And I realize that, but I wanted to make sure that everybody even is aware of that.
No, I appreciate you.
Mike, eh?
You know, you're definitely qualified, my worry is the hours. You know, that's what my worry is. I mean, it's basically as new, you know, call sort of thing. And if, you know, you're, you're busy, you know, and you like the idea of the fire background and everything else, I think that's great. The only thing is that I see as an issue is you're, you're filling in sometimes, I don't want to say at moment's notice, but, you know, it's a fill-in position, and that's my worry, to jumble your schedule around to fit our schedule. And it's not fair, 25 hours an hour occasionally to ask you to take off time or something. That's the blow number that I have.
How, how far advanced does, um, Mike have to submit, or how does he let you, you know that he's going to be off? So I use this, I work for the state, it's the only place that I've worked since I was 17, so I mean, I know, I gotta put something in.
Well, it's, you know, several weeks in advance, you know, you know, he was, I think, when he was hired, he told us.
Okay.
I mean, that's on a scheduled vacation, but now if Mike gets sick or something like that, and he's out for a couple of weeks, that's a different story. I mean, it happens, you, you know? So, I mean, that's, that's the only thing that I, you know...
But I don't think it's probably going to get that with anybody unless they're retired, unfortunately. I kind of retire, but I'm not... Maybe once a month for an hour or something. No questions?
No questions.
Okay.
Have you read the town code?
Have I read the town code? No. You mean the building code itself, or what, or the...
The one with specific, I mean, is, is on, is on the code?
No, I have not.
I'm going to guess because of your comments regarding the gun club that you don't have any affiliation with that one?
No. I've been there on a couple of site visits with them as deputy fire chief, that's the only time I've actually been out there.
And, and no affiliation with any of their support?
No. Does state book friends count?
No. Absolutely. And then, um, do you think that you would be reporting to them?
Who do I think I would report to?
Yeah.
Um, if I read the job description correctly, I mean, it depends on how you interpret it. You're actually reporting to the Secretary of State, to the State of the United Community as a code enforcement.
At the local level?
At the local level, then you're actually reporting to the town board and supervisor.
Those are my questions, I don't have any.
I mean, you know, the job description clearly states in there about reporting to the building inspector and, and working under the building inspector, but obviously the building inspector works for the town board.
Do you have any more questions? Can we answer all your questions?
Yeah, I didn't have that in there. I mean, I brought, um, I needed to print out from the state, I got that in there, but I brought, I mean, I have a lot of certificates, most of them, I mean, some of them are from local stuff, but I brought one just in case, even though I asked a lot, I didn't bring any, I don't know.
Come prepared.
Well, it's one thing that I've always knew is if I take on a position, it's going to be done 100% the right way, in my eyes. That's just how I am.
I just have one more question. Does your softball team win?
I actually didn't finish, because, um, I did it.
No, I mean, who won the game?
Oh, no, we only won a couple of games. We didn't, we weren't very good, but, uh, maybe I should just...
That's fine.
The taxi man. You're welcome, thank you for having me. Okay? You have my number, so if you just let me know, I'll, I'll be home for a couple more of these.
I hope you, you're well soon.
Well, I'm, well, I want to go back to work, I'm sick, you know, but unfortunately, you know, you can't adopt this when you're back, so, you know, I have a page to shut off, can't go to the phones. Nice, thanks, but it is what it is.
One day and done, yeah?
Exactly. Okay. Thank you, so, take care, nice.
Night. Do you really have any, as an active fire, um, fire inspector, if he needs such a pain in his walk hours, whether it's in the evenings, or else, that's, he's going anyway under a different process and that would just confuse him. He has to have the exact answer, this is a backup to a backup, as it needed. But he has to keep up all those certificates anyway. I don't see any downstairs. Yeah, but having Don Smith, that's the one, that's the day we're doing business hours. And also the fire calls, you know, so there's two people calling each other.
I mean, what I see what it really comes down to is what are we looking for in that? Are we looking for someone to take over the set hours of the building department, or are we looking for someone to back up the building inspector? So now, if you're looking for the set hours in the building department, eight to 12, or whatever it is, you have to have someone that has that schedule. If you're willing to be flexible on that eight to 12 time, then we're a little more flexible on our schedule, something would, Mark might work. But from what I'm gathering from the job description that Victoria's looking for, it looks like it's someone that has to be in that office from eight to 12 to cover what Mike is supposed to be there.
I mean, it's just amazing. It seems to me with $14,000 a month in, in building inspection fees, we need to keep that office open, that, you know, if he goes away on vacation or gets hurt or is out of commission for some reason, we do need somebody who has the flexibility, and Don Smith has the part-time hours to be able to, and the flexibility and the willingness, and he works all Katrina, so I would think it would be a very, very seamless operation.
You're worried about keeping the building inspector's office, and maybe we shouldn't be looking for a deputy, maybe we should be looking for a $12 or $13 an hour second instead of a $25 an hour building inspector.
Well, we need a building inspector in case somebody's scoring cement, so we can go and do that kind of thing. We need to have somebody who does building inspector work.
More hours than if somebody's scoring concrete, they don't want to wait until 4:30 until market's off, they're, they'd be here. I think, you know, Don has a lot of experience and he's close by, so he's flexible, and he's interested in adding hours, I think it's pretty obvious that he's a, he's got the flexibility. We don't need him for those hours, we don't use him for those hours, but if something comes up, we have him, and maybe, maybe we're just going to get some doggone busy, we actually need to have a deputy, you know, pop in and, and give some more hours, I don't know. we actually need to have a deputy, you know, pop in and give some more hours, I don't know, I just don't know. But it just seems like we've been extremely busy the last couple of months, right? Yeah, it seems like it's been busier than it ever, I don't remember that, that objectivity. So I think the flexibility at this time, it goes up and down. Don is a natural, because he can slide right into, and he's just not going anywhere, he's not really seeking out a full-time job at Benfica, he's in that nice sweet spot where he has enough money to live on, but he's not, you know, so he's not looking for...
I mean, I have to... Is John's current certifications? Last one, I see is twenty-ten. He has a public certification, or did he have it last time? I had the, maybe probably the state cert, who is certified, the state, who is currently on, class, and he was on the list, in the state list. So I guess it's an oversight, you have to walk this route. Or if he is on the state, what is, is on his, right program, I can see, today, big backup. Documentation, yes. You want to just surprise attention, you take a look. I made a motion that we hire Don Smith, the Deputy Building Inspector, twenty-five dollars an hour, effective immediately.
Councilman Lyne?
Yes.
Councilman Hitzberger?
Yes.
Councilman Doyle?
Yes.
Councilman Corey?
Yes.
You don't actually have anything under other matters, but invited him to executive session for pending litigation. Is that a requirement that we have?
It is, and we are in public session, it's fine.
For executives and for, for election that we have adjourned to executive session.
I'm sorry. Who's that? You, I, you know. You don't really love the girl. Councilman... Don't we please? Councilman Lyne?
Yes.
Councilman Hitzberger?
Yes.
Councilman Doyle?
Yes.
Councilman Supervisor Corey?
Yes.
We made a motion to offer the state effort to file the answering papers on Article Seventy-Eight to see on behalf of the town board.
Second. Councilman Lyne?
Yes.
Councilman Hitzberger?
Yes.
Councilman Doyle?
Yes.
Councilman Supervisor Corey?
Yes.
I don't have anything else, I just have one. Motion to adjourn. Second.
Councilman Lyne?
Yes.
Councilman Hitzberger?
Yes.
Councilman Doyle?
Yes.
Supervisor Corey?
Yes.